I hate to interrupt everybody's busy conversation, but we do have a long night, so we'd like to get started. Are these working here? Okay, there we are. In compliance with Chapter 231 Public Goal of 1975, the Title Local COVID Meeting Act, I could notice that this meeting has been provided as specified in the act. Proper notice of this public meeting was provided in the notice and should notice was posted at the entrance of the Board Education Office, mailed to the Nutley Sun, saw away from the North Jersey Herald News and the Nutley Journal, mailed to the Nutley Township Clerk, advertised in the Nutley Sun, and posted on our district website. This is an official meeting. In consideration of all here present and in recognition of the importance of these proceedings, it is requested that all cell phones and pagers be turned off or silenced for the duration of this meeting. Thank you. Just time to do the flag salute. What's the name of this?
The flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of 400 States, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you don't mind, we may make a little bit of a moment of silence for the issue that took place in Barclay. Thank you very much. Roll call, please.
This is Ben Jack Martin here, Ms. Lynn here, Mr. Tom, Mr. Reed.
Here.
Ms. Russo.
Here.
Mr. Spenero.
Here.
Mr. Zitbado.
Here.
Mr. Zizzi.
Here. Thank you. The approval of the minutes as they were prepared?
Yes, Mr. President, I make the motion of accepting the minutes as prepared.
Thank you. For any correspondence, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Any, I know, any correspondence? Unless we have any or not, any questions? Superintendent's report?
Thank you, Mr. Kozinski. Some updates since our last board meeting. Essex County Challenge 24. We had eight elementary students participate in the Essex County Challenge 24, competing against over 60 kids throughout the county, playing mathematics games, demonstrating their skill in math, their acumen for the content area, and four of the 12 semifinals were up. I want to congratulate Chris Bahorkins, Ian Brown, Raymond Chen, and Matthew Robel from Washington, Radcliffe, Lincoln, and Spring Dart. So four of the five schools represented, along with the elementary participants, 12 high school students volunteered their time and received community service hours to make sure the executive runs. We had students at all levels helping out. Mentioned before briefly on the touch base again, the Board, the Principal's Office. New Jersey Chamber of Commerce Foundation launched a program calling the Principal's Office, trying to connect local industry with the classrooms to make sure students are prepared and the industry is doing everything it can to support learning in classrooms. Mr. Williams and other high school were not the ones singled out. He'll be participating in the activity and we'll let the Board know how it's going. It was nice to be singled out and he's looking forward to representing us. An update, as we are indeed, we're going to man college acceptance. I know there's a lot of concern as we made some changes last year. Our high school seniors, college acceptances are rolling in. And just a few updates, we've recently talked with Mrs. Davilio last week. Students have been accepted to institutions including Carnegie Mellon, Colgate, Columbia, Cornell, Dartmouth, NYU, Rutgers, the College of New Jersey, University of Virginia, Villanova, Williams, and Wesleyan, and happy to announce that one of our students came back. Let us note he was just accepted at Harvard. So Essex County Academic Speaking Tournament, first round was Thursday, March 28th, just after our last meeting. Two Nutley Elementary teams and three students from all of our schools competed in the event. The Nutley B team defeated Milburn by a score of 300 to 200, and the Nutley A team defeated Bloomfield with a score of 700 to 200, which was the highest score ever in preliminary round. Both of them have received buys right into the semifinals, which will be held April 25th this week at 5:30 at Bloomfield Hill School, 101210. So those are some of the things that have happened. One of the things I'd like to take the opportunity now to talk about is that we have agreed to go on a district. I think, I think personally, it's all good, but one of the things we're trying to do is make sure that we live to our strategic plan. We want people involved, and the conversations that we're having are complicated, but we're trying to have them. We're trying to give everyone appropriate time and information so that they can be informed and involved. Case in point, the school performance reports were released. We had a public meeting before just to discuss the format. We will be working with the PTOs at each building to set up individual meetings at each building because again, the way the data is presented, you can't have a conversation about the data with more than one building. So we're going to make sure that we get around that anyone either from those areas, whether it's an elementary school or anyone in the community wants to come out and have conversations about what the data means and what we're doing with it, we'll be there to have those conversations. Instructional rounds, we have one school remaining, one school visitor remaining, it's Radcliffe. They had to be rescheduled, looking to go toward the end of May. But again, the conversations that we're fostering, how our local professional development committee, which is in charge of our goal setting, is connecting what we do to instructor rounds, to again, foster conversations. We had a meeting of our district evaluation advisory committee comprised of board members, parents, teachers, and administrators from all levels, including central office. It's a very complicated conversation. The state has asked districts to do a great deal, and it may be unthoughtful to say, but a lot of it is really good. It's going to help us, but one of the things, what is making me grateful to us is that we have some great collaboration between teachers, administrators, and the other stakeholders. We're finding ways to take what the state is asking all districts to do and make that live within our philosophy so that it can really promote growth in the kinds of classrooms which eventually becomes good for students. Academic Justice Review, our science pilot, K-3, our mathematics pilot, K-12, and our language arts model classroom dreams are all continuing. By the end of May, we should be able to make decisions based on our new, what we've learned from these pilots and what we want in our classrooms. So we're looking forward to the work continued, and again, our teachers are taking upon themselves to go out there and try new materials, learn new methods, and the rest, and then come back and talk about what we think is best for our students moving forward. Our high school concert choir, after performing at Carnegie Hall, was invited to perform in Connecticut at the National Conference. As you can imagine, the students up there, and while they're, actually, I think it happened while we were in Carnegie Hall, they were invited to perform an extremely prestigious event in the Kennedy Center in Washington DC, so they'll be traveling there. So congratulations to all for their hard work. As another heads up, it is April, May. Our state local assessments begin this week across the district, so between now and the end of May, different grade levels will be testing based on either what assessments we give internally or what the state requires us to give. We were visited by middle states between the last meeting and now at the high school, looking for recreditation. Generally speaking, the visit went extremely well. The middle stage group speaks to community stakeholders, administrators from central office and from the building, teachers from all four grades, as well as students. We got an initial report presented to us the last Friday before break, but we are waiting the final written report. We've got two drafts, but we're waiting for them to finalize all their information. So a report will be coming on that. Anyone who's been around the high school would notice that our building grounds working tirelessly to set things up, but Mr. James, with your help, the parking lot has been repaid around the high schools. So one of the things we're trying to do across the entire district as an example of our careful investment in our infrastructure, is making sure our buildings and our facilities are the kinds of facilities that we want our students to attend and our students to use as centers for events. There's a high school student forum that we've been working on, again, working with the students to come out and share their ideas. I actually spent one full day with Mr. Williams, Mrs. Davilio, and Mr. Francia when he could be there for all the lunch periods of one day, allowing the students to come down and speak to us about issues that concern them. We tried to focus on instruction and the overall atmosphere of the high school. They were extremely forthcoming, didn't really hold back, and we got a lot of good information. It was so good, in fact, that we're looking to hold one every month now, and we're possibly looking at some times after school or before school because based on our schedule, there are some students who cannot, do not take lunch. So we want to make sure that everyone has the ability to come down and speak. Tomorrow, the second meeting of our local professional development committee. We're a little bit behind, but we're doing good work. The goals again for the committee are to review how we did this year and to set new goals at district level, and then to train our school professional development committees on how to set building level goals, all of which will be tied to our common language, to our instructional rounds, and to our strategic plan. So we're looking forward to that. Finally, strategic plan, we have a meeting of the long range facilities planning committee. I'll let Mrs. Dancheck Martin talk a little about the specific meeting, but we had members of the configuration committee there. They've been doing a great deal of work as an example of our strategic planning work. What I wanted to bring up again is that all the conversations I said before are complicated. We're trying to find the time to have these meaningful conversations in a way that's going to help us move the district forward. The configuration committee already has recommendations for next year, as well as a plan for year two and our strategic planning work as to what we're doing for years three through five. So we have a lot going on. Upcoming events, NJCAT Parent Information Night. Lincoln School Auditorium, April 23rd, 6:30 PM. It's an initiative that we've been working with at the elementary level to get students talking about parent sharing bullying, we want to get the information out to parents. Spoke about the academically speaking tournament, April 25th, 5:30 PM, Bloomfield Hill School. Our Lincoln School Art Show, St. John's in Newark, April 27th, beginning at 1:00 PM opens to the public. Looking forward to showcasing the work of our students. Our Academic Booster Club is having a word ceremony for students that succeeded, and everyone succeeded, but excelled if you will. Our Science Fair this Friday.
Yep. At the museum.
At the museum, what time is it?
Seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock. Looking forward again to seeing the kids again and just celebrating the work that was done by everyone. Kindergarten orientation, please check our website, based on your home school. They have already begun, we want to make sure that we're moving people in. Our High School Art Festival, we will take place again in May, we're giving Mr. Ackerman with a monthly date?
June 6th.
June 6th, there it is, thank you. It's why we're here, thank you. And finally, we are knock on wood, there's no wood around, Junior Olympics. May 23rd is currently the date, we have two rain dates scheduled, should they be necessary. But I'm told that we're going to be lucky this year. Two more pieces, I have an update just for the board. Mr. Cosma did not get back to me today, but he was in court today. We're waiting to hear, except the decision on timeline for the judge. There have been a number of additional motions filed, but they were looking to keep the same timeline, which is hearing by May 3rd. So hopefully we'll have it right up by hand for tomorrow, and then we'll have more on May 3rd. Last piece, when it comes to communication, trying to get these, all the different things out there in ways that are digestible, understandable, and exciting for people. I know I've been talking about how I've been using Twitter, but I've gotten a great deal of feedback from students and from parents especially, that they don't tweet, they don't use Twitter, they would prefer Facebook. I was concerned about using Facebook because I just feel that it opens us up to a number of potential issues, but in doing research, I found that actually I can link my Twitter feed to Facebook, and by doing so, there are no comments and things like that, but as someone who uses Facebook, you can just simply like the page and you'll receive the updated feed. It actually is a really nice interface. It links right to all the articles that we attach, and we're trying to get as many people involved in our conversations as possible. So if you're interested, you can go to facebook.com/NutleySuper, which is the Twitter handle as well. And if you like that page, you'll receive all the feedback. And again, our goal is to get the information out there so that whether you're a student or a parent or a community member, you feel informed and you can be involved in the conversation.
Thank you, Mr. Lazovic. Can we have the people behind from the hall, please? Thank you, Thomas. We'll just find you soon. All right, thank you, thank you for coming in. We appreciate you being here. We're going to continue with our meeting. Board Secretaries' Report, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. The business office has begun the initial steps towards closing out the 12, 13 school year financials. It's a long process and we need to get started early, but we've had a lot of cooperation from all the administrators, and I thank them all for meeting our deadlines and submitting the remainder of our purchase requests for the rest of the school year. Also, at the same time, we need to start beginning the process of preparing for the 13, 14 school year. So we have a lot going on between now and September. And just a reminder to some of the board members who have yet to go online, please file your financial disclosure forms, and if you're having any trouble finding those emails, let me know tonight before you leave so I can have the state reopen the website and send them to you again tomorrow. Thank you.
At this time, we're going to have Kathy Rocheski from the Educational Foundation of Nutley come forward.
Good evening. It's my pleasure this evening to, I got to Uber, but to, on behalf of the Nutley Education Foundation, we have received a very generous donation from Roche to us, and with the premise that, I had a discussion with Superintendent Lazovic as to, they wanted to donate it for a science-type function, and we've agreed that the Nutley Education Foundation would like to turn this check over to the Board of Education and Mr. Lazovic to be used to buy science kits, and the check is for $30,000. So it will be a very... So again, I would like to very publicly thank Roche for their generous donation, and I am very happy to turn this over to the Board of Education and to Mr. Lazovic.
Thank you, Mr. Lazovic.
Oh, man, I'm sorry, Mr. Dean, I'm sorry.
Thank you very much.
He was very instrumental in helping us come up with the plan. It's going.
Sure, right now, we are piloting not just kits, but a whole system of teaching, really, from Carolina Biological. We're in every school, we have three grade levels going each school, and we're looking at a whole learning cycle from how they start to exploring with the kids, to how they reflect and how they think about science. So it's really going to go a long way in our science department. Thank you very much.
Oh, you're very welcome. So, there you go. Don't pass right over, thank you. Want to take a picture?
Normally, we're all retarded until we're here.
Okay, here we come. Again, thank you, Roche.
At this time, we'll have Joe Power, our Athletic Director, come forward to make some awards.
Thank you, Mr. Kozinski, Board of Education, Mr. Lazovic. My pleasure to be here tonight and present our winter sports awards. We had a great winter, one of probably the best we've had in a long time. We have quite some great individual accolades, all conference. We've also have, are celebrating some team championships here tonight as well. So without any further ado, I'd like to present, and perhaps we can get some members of the board's attention. Representing the girls' basketball team, who had a great year this year, we were able to host two state playoff games, and we won one of those games. I think they went 13 and 6, which is one of the better years they've had in a while, and the basket, the girls' basketball program is really on the rise. And representing the girls' basketball first team, all Super Essex Conference freshman Blair Watson. Grace Montgomery. And Jacqueline Ziver.
If the parents want to come down and take a picture, go right ahead. Congratulations, ladies.
Representing the boys' basketball team, first team, Super Essex Conference, Mr. Scott Gonzalez, Scott. Second team, Mr. Charlie Bingham. And honorable mention, Mr. Jonathan Russo. The wrestling team had a fantastic year this year, and we're going to talk about their team accomplishments in a little, in a little while, but they had some great individual accomplishments as well. Great representation on our all-conference team, started off with first team, the American Division, Joe Ferendi. First team, the American Division, I would be remiss if I didn't mention that he went down to the state tournament, found himself on a medal stand placing eighth in one of the, both of our wrestlers that placed there was the most inspiring performance I've ever seen on a Nutley Raider, Nutley athlete in 15 years that I've been in the system. Brandon Keenan. Another young man that qualified for a state tournament, did an excellent job this season, Mr. Vincent Minero. The second half of our NJSIA state place winning duo, and this was his third time on the podium, he also broke this year's, or broke the school record for the most wins, and again, part of that most inspiring performance down in Atlantic City, Robert Trumbett. Second team, all SEC, senior Rafti Fesquod. He's playing golf right now, actually, he's on our golf team, so we'll catch up with him later. Second team, Steven Scutaro. And honorable mention, Pete Burbak.
Same way, if parents want to come down, you can come down and take the pictures.
Representing our swimming program this year, we were very fortunate to have a young lady make the all-SEC swim team. I believe that's the first time in school history, as well as placing in the SEC and Essex County meet. She's a phenomenal swimmer and she has some great success outside of the interscholastic arena in recent weeks with qualifying and swimming on the state national level. Tara McGorothy, second team, American Division, swimming. We had three all-conference hockey players this year, and again, the hockey team had some great success. They had some phenomenal success, making it into the NJSIA playoffs, winning 17 games, which I think might beat the school record for most wins for ice hockey. Anthony Gandolfi. David Fiero. Is he close?
He just called, they just got back from golf.
Oh, okay. Alex Ascorger. Our bowling team won the Super Essex Conference American Division for the fourth year in a row. The Super Essex Conference only been in, is in its infancy stage, it's only been around for four years, and we've managed to win every year. They also won the Essex County Championship. We adopted a new policy athletic program, we want to reward our teams when they do well. When you win the SEC, you get a T-shirt that says SEC Champions. When you win a county championship, you get a really nice watch that says Essex County Championship. So, being the fact they won both, we combine the two, and we're going to bring Mr. Ackerman down here first so I can present him with his county championship watch that says SEC American Division and Essex County Champions. Those are the team, so we'll bring them down and present them as well, and... Vincent Amato. Francis Farah. Future NBA basketball. Evak Johnny. Brandon Quan. Mr. Colonel Oya. Christopher Monda. Parth Patel. Greg Ostroma. And Zach Rizinski. Now, some of these students aren't here because they're playing golf tonight, or the golf team, or the play, tennis with the tennis team.
Tennis, golf, tennis, track team.
Track team, which is excellent. Track team, which is excellent. Second team, All SEC Wrestling. First team, New Jersey Interscholastic Hockey League, Steven Scatara. Come on, wait a second. I'm going to take a picture. You can come here. He's a volunteer, I think. It's like all of us. The wrestling team did an outstanding job again this year as well. Second Essex County Championship in a row. Now, we had the Essex County Tournament has been around for approximately, frankly, about 30 years, 35 years, and we had never won it until last year, and we won it two years in a row this year. We also won our second district championship in a row. A great bunch of kids that really turned it on towards the end of the year. So, to present, Mr. DiPiano with his second Essex County Championship in District 14 Watch. Mr. DiPiano. And we're going to bring up the wrestling team as well. Andrew Aiello. Patrick Callahan. Robert Dutchberg. Darwin Pena. Kenny Pena. Jason Castellanos. Matthew Cologne. Anthony DiLorenzo. Joe Iorio. Vin Minero. Anthony Mecca. Anthony Puzoff. Peter Burbach. Julian Figueroa. Steven Scatara. Robert Spagnola. Rafti Fesquah. Michael Zine. Brandon Keenan. Robert Trumbett. This next group of young ladies are the team managers, and I would be remiss if I say that being a team manager in a sport like wrestling is probably the most committed position in the building. These young ladies stay in these wrestling tournaments from six in the morning until nine at night, and they're a backbone in the program. They rarely complain if ever, and they do everything that coaches and the kids need, so they really deserve a good round of applause as we bring them up. Brianna DeMeo. Tori D'Amico. Jessica Nuzzo. Last but certainly not least, Coach Anthony Montez. I think we're good here. Okay, last but certainly not least, our cheerleading squad won their fourth consecutive SEC Championship. They also won... they won a lot of competitions. Of course, you know, I was getting text messages every Saturday night, "We won another one, we won another one, we won another one." But they are four-time SEC Champions, so we're going to bring them up. Coach Connie Wati. This fit me well. Don't worry. Now, the sizes, we got you all the sizes that you needed, but you guys have to work that out after the meeting, okay? Okay, Alexa Capazi. Rosemarie Critelli. Carly D'Angelo. Mallory Delmorel. Rachel D'Antonio. Erica Naprio. Real Feaster. Sidney Bogus. John Bruglio. Catherine Hovin. Chris Lee Leoni. Amanda Lurie. Shavon McGonigal. Jenna and Joel O'Halleran. Corey Claye. Rihanna Rizzi. Tyler Jack. Devin Stabile. Ladies, congratulations. Olivia, I'm sorry. Oh, Olivia Trent, you're right there. I'm sorry. Thank you very much. My pleasure, Mr. Lazvik. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm a great. Whoa, 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 hang up, hang up. Just before you leave, okay? I want to thank you for your great job you did this year, the coaches, the students, the parents, for the time that you put in. We'll spend a little, couple minutes congratulating everybody, and then you guys can go home and go to sleep. Thank you. How you doing? All right? Good job. Thank you all, folks, for doing a nice job. At this time, we'll take the committee reports. Mr. Danza, please.
The long-range facility planning committee met today, and we received a preliminary report from Dr. Haber. Basically, he's mapped out the district right now in attendance zones. He's completed surveys of the principals, how the facilities are being used, and how we are accommodating students and programs. He's also completing a walkthrough of all the schools and speaking with the principals. He's finished up all the schools so far, except for the high school. Right now, the enrollment levels are high, and this is projected to either increase or remain the same over the next coming years. Two of our buildings are of concern, which are Washington and Yenacqua. Right now, there's no more room to accommodate the increase in the student population. Three other buildings are also at capacity. Dr. Haber is finalizing a report, which we should receive on Friday, which will list all the different options for the districts.
Thank you very much. Mr. Reed.
The academic committee meeting met on April 2nd, and I want to thank Mr. Lazvik for taking the time during that meeting. I think we spent at least two hours to go through the school report cards, and he presented the academic committee with the new layout, design, and data available regarding how the school report card has been updated by the state. One of the concerns, reservations, I think, that the committee was holding was regarding the marker for college and career readiness, which seems to be based on the amount of absences, 18 or more, which negatively impacted the district. That is one of our concerns. I know that Mr. Lazvik also spent the time last week to have a one-on-one, if you will, for parents, which I know we have that on our website as well, that PowerPoint, all the presentations. So, that was some... a lot of time we spent discussing the overall of that school report card. And also, we were provided update regarding the configuration committee, and I think the configuration committee at this juncture is exploring changes to the possible schedule for teachers and so forth. But I know that no changes will be made to the scheduling of individual school or high school unless that is approved by the board, and some of that was in mind of the committee members. Due to the implications on staffing, contract, and I'm sorry, contract and instructional space and materials, so that would impact how this various schedule will be reconfigured. The 2013-2014 calendar is available for us to approve tonight on our board agenda. I know that we just recently went through a pilot update from the superintendent. All teachers have been trained in each of the programs, and all materials are in the classrooms. As teachers pilot the materials, they will collect data on each of the programs, and this pilot will run through the end of May. In addition, we've also similarly have run through a language arts model classroom training update. Our English teachers have been modeling lessons under the guidance of our consultant, that being Dr. Klein, and that will run... I think Dr. Klein will return on May 1st for the next full day of model lessons. Is that correct? So, we'll get back to walk our teachers through that process. Silence Pilot Update, the training for the teachers, the opportunity to learn about the overall program, the interconnections with other content areas, and the use of literature, which will impact various science units, and the chance to practice with the kids, and that's something Mr. Banney just reviewed for us. Another update, Health for Youth. During the school year, Washington School participated in the Health for Youth program through Claremont as part of their pilot program, and the district has now been afforded the opportunity to apply for all of our elementary schools. I think setting us one last item on the agenda was the AP Macroeconomics textbook. That was also brought to our attention. I'm not sure if they decided on that textbook yet or not. But that's pretty much the academic report.
Thank you, Professor Reed. Mr. Scizaro.
President, the administration committee met April 18th, Thursday. A couple of things we discussed. We met with Ian regarding technology, shared services with the township regarding our fiber optics. We discussed a couple of different plans. We discussed, we met with Mr. Pyrow regarding athletics. He went down, gave us a five-year plan. He shared the needs of each department, and then we discussed what would be for this coming year's budget that we could put into the program. We discussed strategic planning. We had an update on special services, which I understand we're still in the search of. Okay. We spoke about facilities, long-range facilities planning. We discussed the high school parking lot, which was mentioned, being a public library, and we discussed reflective school facilities, some update. We also have some job descriptions for a lead nurse, a new job description for a specialist for gifted and talented, and a specialist job description for technology. We discussed budget regarding staffing of special services, and then we discussed a couple of policies that are on today's agenda tonight for a first reading. We reviewed the agenda for tonight's meeting, of course. Tonight's recommendations from the meeting were the reading of the policies and our personal agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Scizaro. Press point.
On April 16th, the finance committee met. We talked about a number of things. We talked about the resolutions that are offered tonight. One of them, I might put your attention to, is the resolution approving the audit of our referendum funds, affect the costs. We're discussing relates to that. So, we got an estimate. We don't think their initial estimate is going to be used, but the resolution decided not to exceed $14,000 dollars to audit our referendum funds, so that we can use that audit to submit to the state in the revenue, and we use and they have the revenue. We discuss, and we have been discussing, constantly looking forward financially as it relates to our budget. I think we did that as a finance committee for the last two years, which really helped us in our conversations with the union negotiations, and helps us with planning for textbooks and investment, and helps planning for the budget. Looking at it at our last meeting, we're not unlike many municipalities and boards of Ed throughout the state of New Jersey right now, that you're starting to see the impact of the 2% cap on budgets, and we're going to start seeing it. We've been making really smart decisions, I think, over the last two years, but we're going to have... next year's budget is great, but the year after that, we're going to have to do some planning to address the issues that relate to when your budget only increases 2%, because not all costs follow or adhere to the 2% cap. Insurance goes up on average 10% a year. Utilities, I mean, there's so many costs that just don't adhere to the 2% cap as much as we would like. So, we're continuing that discussion, and we continue to report back to the board for purposes of our planning moving forward. Capital research. Oh, yes. In light of all the issues that we're discussing, long-term facility planning, referendum... In light of all the issues that we're discussing, long-term facility planning, referendum funding, and what we're going to do, we asked the VA, the administration, to come back to us with a report on to what we should be doing with capital reserves. As a board, we are committed to investing in our capital funds. I mean, I know a few years ago, we didn't have much money. Now, we are dedicating in our budget line money every single year, and we're going to continue to do that. And as we're doing that, we're looking in our five-year window constantly. We really need some hard numbers as to what capital projects we have on the horizon. So that's something the finance committee would like to be updated on in the next meeting or the next few meetings. Fiber network, we also talked about the fiber network, we ensured services with the township, and continuing to look at those costs and the benefits to the township, to the board. We looked at professional services, RFQs, the administration recommended that we do an RFQ for legal, so that's, that's coming up on the horizon. We looked at Liquid Church's lease renewal. They've approached us, they are, all reports have been that they are a very good tenant, they pay on time, if not early. They are, they give a lot for the community, they really kind of infuse themselves into the community in a positive way. They asked us if they could use another room in light of the components and the financial components of the lease agreement already. They're going to be paying a weekly rate of $1,400 under the terms of the new lease. We're recommending a two-year lease that we're looking at. We don't have the agreement, it's not on the agenda tonight, but I just wanted to bring that to your attention so that we can start discussing it. They asked us if they could permanently mount the speakers in the auditorium. Apparently, they have some very high, very expensive, very good equipment that they bring in every week and bring out. One of them is their speakers that they use for the services. They would like to keep them in the middle, in the middle school auditorium permanently and mount them, they'll incur the cost right now. They're going to incur the cost for mounting that now? Yes.
No, they mean when they wait.
Yes. Yes. So, so I just wanted to, just to bring that to your attention. We're just going to make sure, you know, it's, you know, structuralized, it's a good idea. Don't let them do that, because they've been doing it, and we wouldn't let them do it if it wasn't an idea. Mrs. Umin's provided an update on the SIM energy auction, which will take place on April 30th. We also talked about tree trimming proposals. We talked about the renewal of the waste removal contract, which we are going to talk about as a shared service going forward, but this year, we're not going to. And it's funding for the seed perch challenge. And finally, we also talked about extended day and looking at options for next year. And that's to be.
Thank you very much. Any other committee reports? We now come to the portion of our meeting where we allow members of the public to address the board. In this section, we allow questions or comments on only the resolutions addressed in tonight's agenda. Our board regulations six oh one allows 20 minutes for these communications. Each person should be limited to three minutes, and we ask you to try to stay within this requirement. Speakers may speak more than once only after all others wishing to speak on a topic has been heard. All statements will be directed to me as the chairperson, and no one may address board members individually. Please be reminded that if your statement is too lengthy, personally directed, abusive, obscene, irrelevant, or redundant, your participation may be terminated. Please remember to always state your name and address each and every time you address the board. First person who has something to say, step forward, please. Mr. Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Alan Thomas, 108 Tinley Street. Mr. President, I ask that the, after the board approves the first reading of the new policies under amendment resolution number two, that the policies be posted on the district's website so that everyone else can read them too. Appreciate that. Mr. President, finance resolutions two and three do not make specific references to the appendices to which the board relies on in passing those resolutions. I have the requirement that you amend those resolutions to improve them. I note that appendix C was not online over the weekend or even this morning. I hope the board had plenty of time to review the list of rules and then to retain what they were on it.
I know what appendix C we got late later on.
Yes, yes. Steve, can you just, what was the first part of your?
The finance resolutions two and three do not make specific reference to appendices B and C respectively, the way it stands, since resolution number one makes reference to appendix A and B. Just that the board relies on all reports, and it should be specific reference in the official records that the board is subject to.
Thanks.
This president, regarding finance resolution number 12 approval we audited, Ms. Flynn, her report of finance committee mentioned that they would be auditing the 2007 referendum. Refresh my recollection which schools was in that referendum?
I don't know offhand. I know there were quite a few schools.
It's not the middle school referendum, I see.
All but, all, Mrs. Hamid's telling me, all but the middle school.
Okay, thank you. And the resolution indicates will also be the 2013 financials. Is that, is that right? That was what I mentioned, that part. $14,000, you're both on it?
Yes.
If they want.
Not true. Hopefully, last.
Regarding personal resolution number two, again, this is approval of employee calendar. Again, if we could get that person online, it would have been helpful to add it beforehand so that members of the public, if they wanted to, who these staff members could comment on it. And finally, on personal resolution number one, it saddened me to see that one of the things that you will be approving is the retirement of Mr. Ackerman. Ackerman has been with the district for four years. I first met him when my son was in a cat program 18 billion years ago. And I just found he was just an extraordinary educator. And every time I've had, chatted to him over the many years, it's clear that he brings the, what he's brought to the district over the years has just been wonderful. And he's not a bad bowling coach either. So that's just wonderful. I know the board is able to do something, the staff will do something to show their appreciation for his many of the services.
You lack of.
Mr. President, I might just one more question on the capital projects funds.
What resolution were you making?
Uh, this is finance, one, two, or three? I'm glad I've asked this before, and I just don't know the answer, so I beg your indulgence. Because one of the issues we've been discussing over a couple of board meetings is there's a surplus in our capital fund. What are we going to do with it before we have to return? And one of the things I noticed this month is that there's a reserve for incumbents of over $700,000. Why do we already incumbent?
The majority of that is the contract with DCA that is on the litigation.
Okay. Are the litigation expenses being paid out of the capital fund? Are they being paid out of the board's general fund?
They're currently being paid out of the general fund.
Okay. Okay, what's the other half for?
The other half?
You said half of the $700,000?
No, 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 I said the majority.
Oh, really?
Majority of the $700,000.
Okay.
We have one contract still open for some locks, and then the paving will be part of that next time.
Mr. President, do we have a plan, sort of coming up with a plan of what to do with the rest of these, those funds?
Yes, we do.
And when will we be doing that, Glenn?
When, when we finalize it. It's, it's all just being discussed right now on where the priorities are. When we do have a final plan, we'll, you'll know at the same time we do, as soon as we can.
Hate to play lawyer on this, Mr. President.
I know.
Will that be at the end of the school year, or are we going, or do we have a September 1st or something like that?
I, I think once we're finished with the audit, that, that is going to give us a clearer plan on what we do have and where the priorities might be.
The audit of the 2007, and when do you expect to see that?
Do we have a date on when you're?
They're going to, I'm waiting for them to give me a start date. They, hopefully, they'll be starting next week.
$14,000, they're not going to move it.
Oh, that's a counter.
As soon as we can, because we would like to move forward with that also.
And that's what the finance committee asked for in the next meeting, presented with a list of that capital fund.
That'll be in three weeks.
Who knows with the list?
Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Any other citizens who stood here at this time? If not, we'll move forward with the resolutions. Mr. Reed, Dr. Reed?
I guess, thank you, Mr. President. I make a motion to move academic resolutions one through three and three.
Second. We have a second, then?
Yes.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Flynn, check, fine.
Yes.
Miss Flynn?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Dr. Reed?
Yes.
Miss Russo?
Yes.
Mrs. Scalero?
Yes.
Mrs. Fratello?
Yes.
Mrs. Kuziski?
Yes. Ms. Flynn?
I'm interested in resolution number one.
No, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Mr. Sazaro, please.
Mr. President, I agree with the administration, resolution one was written.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call.
Mr. Flynn, check, fine.
Yes.
Miss Flynn?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Dr. Reed?
Yes.
Miss Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Scalero?
Yes.
Mrs. Fratello?
Yes.
Mrs. Kuziski?
Yes. Now, Ms. Flynn.
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve finance resolutions one through 16 as written.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Flynn, check, fine.
Yes.
Miss Flynn?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Dr. Reed?
Yes.
Miss Russo?
Yes.
Mrs. Scalero?
Yes.
Mrs. Fratello?
Yes.
Mrs. Kuziski?
Yes. Personal resolution, Mr. Klein, please.
Yes, Mr. President, I hear present our resolution number two as written.
Second.
Discussion on one of the resolutions. I would like to certainly record that with George Ackman also. I know we'll do that as a board. I asked him to remain, but I guess he's gotten rather independent after 40 years of teaching. Mr. Ackman is, is an outstanding teacher. I knew him way back when, I was on the board before. Probably, you didn't know, he was also the rifle coach. We did have a rifle team back then, and he was very active in that. He's an outstanding citizen, great teacher, good fisherman, and he's going to be surely missed. Roll call, please.
Mr. Flynn, check, fine.
Yes.
Miss Flynn?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Dr. Reed?
Yes.
Miss Russo?
Yes.
Mrs. Scalero?
Yes.
Mrs. Fratello?
Yes.
Mrs. Kuziski?
Yes. At this time, we're going to the second part of hearing of citizens. In this section, we allow questions or comments on all school-related matters. Our regulations allow 30 minutes for these communications. Again, each person should be limited to three minutes, and we have to try to stay within these requirements. As I stated earlier, all statements will be directed to me. At this time, let the first person like to come forward.
Neil Hinn, 31 Tarasana. I requested some information regarding the health broker evaluation and recommending a reward for the broker, as well as some other information. I want to thank the board for getting that to me in a nice, timely fashion. However, I have to say, I was surprised and extremely disappointed by the evaluation report, considering the, the report says it's supposed to rank the vendors in order of, of evaluation, and shall recommend the selection of a vendor. And it shall be clear in the reasons why the vendor or vendors have been selected. None of these things were in this report. So my question, I guess, first was, who drafted the report?
The report, the, the report that you received?
The evaluation, sir. Would that be Mr. Kushner, who was the?
Our business administrator compiled the information based on the committee that did the interviews and gave you the report that you have in file.
So the evaluation committee never, never did an evaluation report?
Whatever you received from the VA is what was done.
I, I really think this is done extremely poorly. It's not the business administrator's job for that. It should be done by the evaluation committee, since they were the people that were evaluating these people. And nowhere, which is supposed to be writing to the citizens available 48 hours prior, which I just don't understand why we can't have these scanned in and put on the website 48 hours ahead of time, which is done in this day and age quite often with most boards as at this time. So I would recommend that in the future, that the evaluation committee who's doing the evaluation actually do the evaluation report, because this is the report that supposedly the people who vote, who don't have all the information, are going on. And nowhere in this report is it clear who you guys recommended. Secondly, I would like to, something that came up consistently in the report was that a lot of these companies didn't understand the needs of Nutley. I would like to know what is, what the needs of Nutley are that are so different from the rest of the municipalities in the state of New Jersey that make it so unique.
As, as you know by the report that you sent out, all of the committee had that same general comment.
Well, actually, there's no way to know that.
Okay.
It's a compilation of people's comments.
I'll give you.
So I guess there could be particularly one person that had those comments, but not necessarily all three.
Okay. The, the feeling of some of the board members that were on that evaluation committee was that the companies were not, in my opinion, well-informed about the need of the teachers and our administration people, the staff in Nutley, well enough informed to give us a decent breakdown of what their cost might be based on the needs of the teachers and the staff in the district.
Yeah, pretty much, that's just running around the question. I mean, really, this is what these guys are paid for. They, they come in, they're going to do the evaluation. I mean, it's not, they don't know the names of the people, but they can run the numbers, they can look at the evaluations, they can.
Mr. Danz, stand.
So.
Excuse me, one second.
Sure.
You and I had this conversation ongoing for a while. For, for whatever reason, you want to bring it back up again tonight. Some of the people, the brokers that came in, said to us, they could not give a clear picture of what Nutley's needs were because they did not know Nutley's entire needs. The information came from them, and they did not know exactly what we need, in my opinion, in my eyes. And you and I have talked about this, so I, I don't see the reason for bringing it back up again.
Well, the reason for bringing it back up is primarily because now I have the evaluation report, which I didn't have before. And, and, you know, I was told that that report was done, I read what, what the requirements of that report were, and I was told that that was done and was made available. And it wasn't done. It may have been done, it is done totally improperly according to regulations.
In your opinion, in your opinion?
Would you like to know, would you tell me which, which part of those are in these?
I don't.
Is there, is there, is there, in the report, is there a rank of the vendors?
Mr. Danz, if you go back to the question, is there, is there a specific question that you're looking for?
Yes, is, in the report, is there a rank of the vendors in order of evaluation?
I, I'm not sure if there is a rank.
Did you not read them?
Yeah, I did, I did read it. I know what my evaluation was and what they read it was. But, but again, Mr. Danz, that's not going to change.
No, 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 wait a second. You're, you're talking about your personal diagnosis. I'm talking about, I'm talking about the consolidated report that's supposed to be done.
I understand.
So that's, that's what I'm asking.
That evaluation was done and given to the entire board, and the board voted on the broker that we have now.
What I'm saying is, you're saying that the law wasn't, was followed. I'm saying it wasn't.
And again, that's your opinion, and I appreciate it.
It's not an opinion, it's fact.
That's your...
Right?
Your opinion.
Okay. Because IMAC agreed to decrease their fee, who was the original person that requested the fee? Because it actually came in higher this year, their original fee than last year.
Again, I think we've discussed this publicly...
We didn't get an answer to that. I thought you would research it and have it now.
No.
Don't have that, how they came about doing that.
I was not asked for that information.
So we don't know how they came about changing their bid twice. And again, nowhere in the evaluation does it say what that is. But again, I guess that's just my opinion.
No, it's a point. It's a point.
In the evaluation, it said that IMAC got the best price. What evidence did they give in their evaluation to the committee that was obtained that proved that IMAC gets Nutley the best price?
Again, Mr. Lynn, I don't understand your belaboring the point. We've made... The board has made a decision to move forward with this broker. They are our broker of choice right now. We are going that way. The ongoing discussion is not going to change where we're at now. I can't speak for the rest of the committee that was there, and I'm not going to attempt to do that. The board voted on our broker, and that's where we are right now. And this ongoing discussion is not going to change that until we go back out on betting.
Okay. In the future, will you be posting this?
That's a good suggestion.
Thank you. And will the evaluation committee be actually doing the report as it is set here in eighteen A dash four twenty-five?
I will certainly take a look at that and speak with Karen and the...
If you want, I can give you a copy of it so you can read it, but so you're familiar with what the law says.
I'm sure I can.
Because, yeah, we could smirk about it, but, you know...
I'm not smirking.
This is something that actually, these other vendors would have the right to come in. I think Dr. Reed made it perfectly clear. When you're doing these evaluations and you pick the highest bidder instead of the lowest bidder, there has to be a clear reason why you're doing that. Nowhere in your evaluation is there any such thing as a clear reason, okay? Which makes it where this board can be held liable. That's the bottom line, okay? That's why I got this evaluation, because you guys said that you had done it. I'm looking at it, I read it. There's nothing in here that anybody from outside looking at this could say, oh, this is the guy who they recommended. Nothing. And there's nothing in there that differentiates the company that was picked that is twenty percent higher than the lowest bid from anybody else. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to be heard? Mr. Thomas?
Thank you, Mr. President. I apologize for belaboring that point. I was wondering, did we understand how much we were going to be paying IMAC by approving the resolution when it was retained? There was no specific number. It was a question whether it was going to be a fixed fee or calculated as a percentage of the fee. I'm wondering, it's now April twenty-second, whether that has been decided yet, and both boards should have a new resolution and a full approval. It will be consented with any resolution.
Why don't you let me contact you tomorrow, and then I'll make it a public notice of what the exact price is, okay?
Thank you, Mr. President.
Is everybody going to sign a bunch?
You're on the floor.
Mr. President, of course, I cannot make the superintendent's review of the school progress report's evaluation, but I certainly joined with him, and I'm sure the rest of you, in noting that they're somewhat different than the old-school reports did. And I'd like to think I'm a reasonably intelligent person, but even I had trouble figuring out a lot of this stuff. But there was a couple of things in it that I hope the board took special note of. And of course, you need a color screen or a color printer to be able to see some of this stuff, the emphasis on some of this stuff. But I couldn't help but notice the different peer groups for all of our different elementary schools. I don't understand that, and that caused me some concern. I don't know why, other than I can't imagine that the peer groups for our elementary schools are that different from each other. But anyhow, be as it may, looking at the actual school reports, the academic reports, I'm sure you took note of the Lincoln School reports, and how it seems so out of the mainstream of our four other elementary schools, to the point where I began to think, was there a calculation error someplace? I mean, when you look at grade four English, I mean, over half the schools failed.
It's not... Again, to clarify, Mr. Thomas, it's not fail the way some people would perceive it. Based on where they fit in with their other peer groups, they did better than a certain number, worse than some other amount of the group, but that not fail as compared to other private schools in Nutley.
No, Mr. President, I'm looking at the school's actual report, okay? Over half the school in grade four English did not pass in either the proficient or advanced position. That's failing. To me, that's alarming. I noticed there's a rebound in my sixth grade, but when you look at all the scores of the Lincoln School, particularly the language drugs, it's extraordinary how different they are from all of our elementary schools. And I hope the board is going to address that. I know the superintendent will, but I want... I hope the board will monitor this, because this is something we just cannot afford to ignore, because it makes me feel like there's either something really wrong there, or there's been a gross miscalculation, which means the school is being scrutinized unnecessarily. I'm very much concerned with that. The second point is, I think was already mentioned once, is the absenteeism. I was just shocked to see what the absenteeism rates are for our elementary school students. I mean, over twenty percent of our students miss more than two weeks of school a year. And Lincoln, it's over a third of the students miss more than two weeks. Now, I know we've been... We had concerns a couple of years back about the pandemic flu, and this case was something that does go around, there's no doubt about it. I'm not aware of any big, massive epidemics that we've had that keep our kids out of school for... And I'm just shocked to see that. I don't understand it. I hope the board will get to the bottom of this and take some corrective steps. We need to put more of those sanitizing wipes around or something. I don't know what it is.
As Dr. Reed had mentioned, we are all concerned. Certainly, the academic committee has dealt with it, but the entire board is concerned along with the superintendent. And this is certainly going to be a good parameter for what we've already started implementing, working on, things that are going to help improve that. We also are concerned.
On a positive note, Mr. President, it's only because I've been looking at these numbers for years. Although the high school report on college preparedness, particularly on the AP scores, shows that we did not meet our targets, okay? Having compared past reports, okay, our students did do better. I mean, in the sense that more students are getting three or above than we have, is a percentage of students actually taking the test. It's still not anywhere where it needs to be, but I do know that that is an improvement, and that's good to see. I'm perplexed also by the fact that very few... Well, so many of our students, like ninety-two percent of our students take the SAT, but only forty-something percent take the PSAT. And I'm perplexed by that. I mean, I don't understand why that is. If anything, it's good practice, not to mention that's real scholarship money coming from... I certainly hope our top students are taking the PSAT. But I just, you know...
See if our superintendent can come in and maybe answer some of your concerns.
Thank you. Hello? Mr. Thomas, you bring up good points.
Hello?
There we go. Something that we want to discuss when we have a high school meeting. As you can see from the school report, there's a lot more information at the high school level than at the elementary levels. Like the chronic absenteeism, I mean, your comment about the webs, just, again, it's excused or unexcused absences. They count them the same. It could be holiday vacation, it could be anything. It doesn't necessarily need to be a sick day. Literally. Coming from a district, remember that one of the things we want to talk about is why is he in there? Obviously, how frequently or how long a student is in class has been shown through research to be directly correlated to the success of the student to some extent. And when I say to some extent, a lot of this has to do with our lower-performing schools, unfortunately. But I come from a higher-performing district, most recently, where they failed this indicator across the board, because parents take their kids out of school for literally three to four weeks at a time to travel back to their own country and things like that. And yet, if you look at their academic achievement, those students do exceptionally well. I'm not pushing that aside, but what we're using the data for is, we recognize that absenteeism could be an issue. What we're trying to do at the building levels, make sure that we understand who's absent, why they're absent, and whether or not it's having a negative impact on their academic achievement. We've been using real-time differently this year, sending letters home, regardless of why students have been absent, but just to remind parents that this is an important issue. But depending on the school, actually, you're seeing kids out for different reasons and different impacts on those kids. So we're trying to understand exactly how we can use this indicator to highlight the students that are struggling versus the students that are making... or families that are making a decision to not attend school. And one of the things, I mean, just coming from my past district, the parents got together, they took time to understand the significance at the elementary level of chronic absenteeism, and they decided in many instances just to stay red, because they're comfortable that the kids are getting academic... The academic achievement is where they want to be, and they're making decisions about their family to do certain things. I'm not saying that's here. What I'm saying is that we're looking at it. As far as the high school, I mean, again, I'm concerned that fifty-six percent of our kids, only fifty-six percent of our kids are achieving three or above. And that's fifty-six percent of the kids that are taking the test.
Well, that's twice as much as it was four years ago.
We're thinking strides. One of my superintendents, based on the board's direction, was advanced placement. We've taken certain steps. We have a whole other plan to kind of move forward next year again. But one of the biggest things we want to do, and why I want to take the opportunity to answer your question, is that we need to get everyone involved. I talked about Twitter and Facebook. I've tried to post information. One of the things the board's been talking about is this idea of college-bound community, where you're talking... Whether you're college-bound or not, but having certain characteristics in the community, where you have parents, you have local stakeholders, you have teachers and students, as well as the Board of Education, doing certain things that promote these kinds of behaviors. I don't know why our PSAT... Sorry, the students participating in PSAT is less than one or two. In many districts, you're in the high nineties. And it's something we need to talk about, but again, it's something we need to talk about not just as a school district, but with the community. Parents need to know when you enter middle school, that one of the things you want to do is, you want to be preparing for the PSATs. Why? Because research shows the PSATs are even more predictive than the SATs when it comes to college and career readiness, which is why, if you look at some reports we've given as a district over the last year and a half, we focused on those clearinghouse... The clearance out of those PSAT scores and what they're telling us. So one of the things, I think, that might just be awareness. I know also, at one point, the test used to be given during the school day. It's since been moved to a Saturday. I don't know if that's had an impact or not. These are things that we're trying to look at now. But they're all fair points. And though we did meet indicators, and if you look at our peer groups ranking, it's not strictly where we want to be. But again, it's... You have to take all the context of where we are, where the peer group is, and how we can ultimately use this information to inform.
I appreciate that flag, and like I said, I just wanted to point out something that I thought was positive, even though it's still...
Ross, show the direction.
Although it's still unsatisfactory, it's a positive. And I just felt obligated to do that when I saw some of the peer evaluations were in the single-digit percentile, and that's...
And that's a mistake.
And I'm just like, holy cow. Gee, I know you've been working hard. I know your staff administrators and some of the teaching staff have been working hard. But on that score, I don't know why I didn't think that. Look at the honor rolls that were put in the local paper, and I assume the names and the number of names on it is accurate. It was struck by me that the... And I know this is... Nutley is no different than a lot of other school districts. It struck me that being on the honor roll is not all that great of an honor anymore, although it might be perceived to be a greater honor than what it is. If you look at the twelfth grade, you know, over half the twelfth grades are on the honor roll.
This is... We talked about National Arts Society. We talked about grade one average in basketball. We made significant changes in the program of study to our grading process, to the amount of rigor. I know, as you've been sharing around the community, it is true. These changes, the changes themselves, were... could be made somewhat quickly, but their impact is going to take a little bit of while to see. As you see, we're moving in the right direction.
I see the ninth grade, it's only a third of the...
Well, the fact that we're trying to ratchet the rigor, and one of the things we're doing with teachers for common assessments, again, for the first time, is actually comparing internal and external indicators to make sure that we're across the board, telling people, describing performance accurately. We don't want people to walk out thinking that they're doing... And again, students are working hard, teachers are working hard, but how do we accurately indicate where that level of work actually is going to lead us? That's what we're working on.
My concern, and I'm sure it's your concern too, and I'm sure it's Mr. President's concern, is that, you know, back in the old days, you know, very few people made the honor roll, and it was considered to be a good thing. Parents like me were like, oh, my kid's on the honor roll. I think my kid's, you know, he's a genius. I'll exaggerate. I think he's a genius, but no better. Okay. But when so many kids are on the honor roll, and we have to scandal a little bit there, like crazy people like me do, and see, gee, there's a lot of people on the honor roll, it could be essentially misleading. We're thinking, you know, how my kid's going next... Nutley High School, next Harvard, and that could be very harsh on the case. And it could raise the expectation.
I hope you look at it, see that we're not stuck in the conversation with one indicator. I'd love to see everyone on the honor roll, but I'd also love to see all the external anchors as well, demonstrating the same levels of performance.
Mr. President, one more question this regard. If I recall, not the most recent retreat, but the retreat last year, the board received a report that correlated performance on the AP exam with grades in the class. I was wondering if that was done again this year, and what's your...
We haven't... What we did this year, we're still waiting for the AP results for this year. We did... One of you saw was our most recent data. We're waiting for this data to come back. And we implemented... The issues that we did, we talked about common assessments across the district. We actually implemented more common assessments in our advanced placement classes, and we built those common assessments using the test items that college board releases. So we're trying to make sure that we have the appropriate level of rigor for scoring kids, preparing students, before they ever sit for the AP exam, so they can feel more confident, they know what they're going into. We're waiting for that data to come back, but as soon as it does, it's actually one of the goals I have to present on. So there'll be a public presentation on that.
Just wanted... Just so you know, Mr. President, I continue to believe that it can be done and should be done, that the score of an AP test should be worked into the student's grade. It certainly can be done with juniors, there's no problem with them. I think it can be done with seniors as well, because I know there are students out there that don't take... While they know they have to take the AP exam, because now they... If they don't, there's a penalty for it. But there's no penalty for doing it poorly on it, or not caring about it. And I think that is a tragedy. But that's just my opinion, and I continue to advocate that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Anyone else wish to be heard at this time? At this time, I make a motion to adjourn to executive session, where the Board of Education will be discussing matters exempted from public discussion pursuant to...
Do business all bails?
Something?
Do business all opens. We now found the script of...
I'm sorry. All business. All business.
I don't know, Sol, because...
All business. Yes?
I just want to know if we're going to get a report on the impact of changing the grading system at... Yes?
In what respect?
In terms of impact on how it... Did it impact the... In terms of impact upon how it, did it impact the seniors, you know, accepting these policies, just, just a feedback, like a, I guess, a report back to us.
I mean, feedback we're already getting from colleges and universities, because again, not only do they contact us, but we've been following up as we get acceptances or denials, to see what, all of the feedback, whether students were accepted or denied, has been positive from the colleges. As far as what results, again, I don't know that the change is gonna negatively or positively impact anything, but it's your senior advancement, as Mr. Thomas said, you're already seeing a difference at the, at the lower grade levels, but definitely will put together something, it depends on what perspective we're gonna look at the data from.
Yeah, I just, the honor roll actually made a big impact on the Southern paper. It's kind of like, we'll look at it. The school performance reports, I know you're gonna start talking about going to two buildings, and someone had PTO meetings already scheduled, so I know we have to call in all of our schedules to do that, so, so hopefully you'd have scheduled a student, and maybe it would help if you send out through a parent portal, like to get people involved in this conversation to show the importance, the actual report to each parent in each school.
Well, and again, Naviance, we use Naviance, we did, and then with... Well, we can actually, we probably can put it in, it's gonna be difficult. I can tell you what I did to make it easier, though, I tried to get parents involved, and we put it on our website, and I've listed it out multiple times. If you go to our, our main district website, go to the superintendent's corner, and click on school performance reports, not only do you have each school's performance report, you have the state breakdown, and your specific document.
I know, I know, we'd like the data, you're gonna say, you know, we're gonna go to Washington School, we're gonna make this presentation, it should be like a memo with the attachment, and we get flash mob, I've gotten no less than three flash mob flights. I would like to get that many performance report cards, so, so maybe we could start...
Compete with the flash mob.
Just a good beginning there. And so, I don't know, just something to do. And the, I thought it was great that the educational foundation was able to secure that donation from Brosh to the science kids, but I'm hoping that, and I would hope, I know, and we're making investments as the board, but how much more do we need to make it kind of through the district-wide enough science kids?
You want a dollar amount? Couldn't give it to you right now, because we want to negotiate that. I can tell you that we're planning for it, that science is one of the two containers that's going to throw up a new year for of our curriculum cycle next year. We gotta jump on it because of Brosh. I can also tell you that we've been building in incremental budgets, one of the things, you may not, you may not go one year from nothing to the next year, everything. We're building in the early elementary, then the upper elementary, then we'll go to the middle school, and by that point, Mr. Van is already been working with that school, so hopefully he will be in a whole different kind of order by that point. But so we're looking at both things to kind of move it up progressively, so we're not looking for a huge sum of money in any one given year. One of the other things I want, I do want to point out is that we're trying to support, that's actually listed in our strategic plan. Anytime we make a change like this, we have to make sure we have the appropriate professional role for teachers, to try and do that district-wide, and even in just one content area, it's extremely difficult, not only can it set us up for success, but focusing, as Mr. Van is doing, on three grade levels, really allows us to pull teachers separately and provide a professional development just for them, like they get their feedback and have support. Like Miss Klein is only working with a select group of teachers, she's following up with those teachers on a regular basis, so they have time, we don't want just to give them professional development, they look, you have professional development, you must get it right now. It's a learning process for our teachers, too, and they're, they're giving them their own time, and they're working hard while teaching. To do these things, we have to make sure we keep supporting them, and again, there's only a certain amount, there's only so much we can do as a district, but I'm confident if we do everything, dare we on our board, we'll get the desired result.
And do you know why, why are none of our schools in the same tier?
I, when I talked about it at the presentation, one of the things the state did was to try and ensure that no two similar buildings in the district had a similar period, because what they're trying to avoid is comparison between buildings. The purpose of the school performance report is to report on the performance of one school, not to use that performance to then try and create a rag list of, even within one district, how the five K six buildings in Nutley are doing, or are doing. What they're trying to do is say, okay, Washington School, here's the data for you, how are you gonna use it to get better for your population? And again, one thing I did want to point out, so again, we didn't, I don't know how much, how much was communicated out, but I knew this was going to come, unfortunately, that there, the state has said over and over again, please don't use it for this purpose, and everyone's gonna try and use it for this purpose. In order to move beyond that conversation, as I said, one of the things, we need my master's help, in real time, going backwards, we were able to pull data from our last three senior classes, based on which elementary school they went through. And one of the things we're presenting, that is how students, because again, our end game is high school. It's not, Washington, you know, we get through sixth grade, how did our sixth graders do against Lincoln School sixth graders? It's how did Nutley students do? And again, to Mr. Thomas's point before, is there a difference, a significant difference at the end of the system between students, depending on which elementary school they go to? And again, just from a preliminary glimpse, I think there's gonna, there are gonna be some, some eye-opening experiences when we have conversations about that data. And if you look at our high school students compared to each other, based on their own, their initial school, or at the elementary level, that definitely takes a different, but that's, again, that's the district, looking at our own data to enhance what we're getting out of the school performance report.
And I just wanted to thank the No State people, the staff, administrators, who all worked on that No States, both of our, it was like two years ago, it was eighteen months at least, because as Mr. Kevinskin and I found out, that they were very impressed with everyone that they came into contact with in Nutley, all the teachers, all the administrators, all the kids, they loved talking to the kids, they had great feedback, looking forward to seeing what their report had, but I just wanted to thank everyone who worked on that for so long, and stayed, dedicated, committed to the end goal, which is to get the accreditation, so.
Thank you. Any other all business? Any new business? Hit it, Charlie. Motion to adjourn to executive session, where the Board of Education will be discussing matters exempt from public discussion pursuant to MJSA ten dash four dash twelve. Now therefore be resolved as the Board of Education recesses the closed executive session at this time to discuss personnel and student matters. Be further resolved that the results, the results of this discussion will be made public by the inclusion on the agenda, on the agenda of a subsequent meeting, the Board of Education, or when the reason for discussing such matters in closed session no longer exists. Make that motion. Paul Paul?